Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Hingham School Committee meeting of March 12th, 2018, and called to order at 7:32 PM. We do not have any minutes this evening, so we will go to number three, questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. Does anyone in the audience have anything not on our agenda this evening? No? Thank you. And that will get us to superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, one piece of good news I didn't want to share if our student rep was going to share it, but she's not here. So in addition to the wonderful play of virtually all of our winter teams, because everybody made the championships in their sport, I've commented before on the boys' basketball, and sadly, they're at the end. But a wonderful season for them, probably their best ever in Hingham High School history, and because hockey is playing as we speak, and hoping to get to the Garden. But a week or so, we also had our girls' skiers take the Alpine Championship, and I think that occurred on March 6th or 7th, but in any event, last week. And that's all told a first time for us, so we've had a wonderful season. And already, people are prepping for the next sports season, but certainly, good work to all of the players and the coaches, and congratulations to our new athletic director, because I don't think he's ever had a season like this. So, good for him. Also, the March enrollment is there. Not much change, except that in the pre-K, in the short month that February is, we had four new enrollees. And of course, in the pre-K, these are children who are just turning three and are eligible the day they turn three to join our program. So that brings us to a total of 74. And that is not a big change. There was an article referred to on your agenda. It wasn't really an article, it was a notice of a conference, an MAS C conference, and had to do with resource officers. And we've had resource officers, thanks to the Hingham Police Department for many years. So if any of you have wanted to attend that, we can sign you up, but that is the topic of the day. The two current searches that we have going on, we're nearing the end of the search for the foster school principal, and we have three finalists. We were sent three semifinalists. We interviewed them here, and all three have moved on to be finalists. So there is a day that all three will be here, not unlike what we experienced when we had the Plymouth River Search. And they, we had two people at that point, but the same idea that they will come here, and there will be opportunities for them to meet with community members and parents, and an opportunity for the staff, teachers and support staff, an opportunity to have lunch with our leadership team, our senior leadership team, and so on. At the end of the day, for each of those groups, I will sit with them for a debriefing session, so I can get their feedback and input. And then, just this evening, so you have the summary of that experience and day, and you have the summary of the resumes of the candidates in the folder. And also, we put there the, oh, there are dates coming up when our team will travel to the home districts of the three candidates. And those dates Jamie just set tonight, so one of them will be a visit to Barnstable.
On March 29th.
On March 29th. And is that also the date? No, it's not the date that we're, what's the date of the other?
March 27th is when they're coming here.
Okay.
And then we've just scheduled for our team to go to Barnstable on Thursday, the 29th, and then we'll be traveling to both Avon in the morning and the Whittenhanson in the afternoon on Monday, April 2nd.
And that will conclude the activities of that, the search. For the other search, for the Student Services Director, we met with the screening committee for the first time last week, and a good team with the kinds of representation we always have, parents, staff members, school committee, and so on. Some individuals that would be relevant with that particular search. And we have done the paper credential screening, have identified seven people based on that screening, to move forward to be interviewed. The interviews for that search are next week on Monday.
Monday, Tuesday and Thursday.
And Thursday. So that will be moving along. And in subsequent to that, and the identification of semifinalists, it'll be the same process that we'll meet with them here at central office, and then we will have a site visit for however many finalists subsequent to that. And similarly, an opportunity to visit wherever it is that they worked, if that's relevant. In some cases, it may not be, depending upon who the finalists are. So, I think good processes in both cases, and good screening committees, and we're pretty confident of really good outcome in both cases. So, that's the update on that. There is a flyer in your packet about a substitute teacher workshop. We've had several times this year, a shortage of substitute teachers. And it's for a variety of reasons. We have a lot of names on our list, but sometimes, they put their names on the list and really aren't available. Around the holiday season, often, they're off doing shopping and other things. That's the reason they don't work full-time, to have some flexibility about their time. So, and we particularly had a shortage for nurses, and we really cannot do without a nurse. So even though we have two nurses at the middle school and two at the high school, if a nurse is out on any given day, we need to have a sub. And we have only maybe six or seven subs. So several years ago, we were in this situation, and we had a little workshop here and thought, well, we'll get a handful of people. We had, I think, 35 people who showed up at the workshop. Now, we didn't end up with 35 new names in the sub-list, but we ended up with some more. So we felt it was worth doing again, and so that is on the 20th, and we'll be in this room in the morning, about an hour and a half. And we hope that we'll have some candidates for substitute teaching that come out of that. So I think that's it for the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on those issues? Okay. Sounds like the searches are going well, and a nice group of candidates, so that's always good. So communications, any other communications?
The only thing I want to mention, under communications, where you had received an email that...
Yeah, I was gonna go over those. Okay. And I told you our student, her brother is playing in the hockey game, and so she wanted to go and support him and the whole high school, so I completely understand. Then on other communications, there was an email that I had forwarded to the full school committee. We had received on the end of February regarding Project Parkland, and there is a, it was a request from a Dover school committee member, that there's a group of school committees in Massachusetts that are concerned with gun violence, and they're putting together a petition that they're asking other school committees to sign on to, that they would like to send to President Trump at the 100-day anniversary of the Parkland shooting. Ed had informed me that he had some concerns with the wording of the petition, and so he was going to follow up with the person that initiated it, to try and get some clarity. So I'd like to wait until, unfortunately, he couldn't come tonight, but, and he hadn't gotten the information yet either, so I'd like to wait until our next meeting to discuss this further. His concern was that the petition calls for a ban on all modifications to convert weapons to semi or fully automatic status. And he is a hunter, and he said that there are some hunting rifles that have semi-automatic status, and so that he could not support this. So I asked him to, I can understand his position on that, so I asked him to follow up, because he thinks that some other people that are very knowledgeable about those types of guns might have the same concerns, and so I wanted him to find out about that, to get clarity of where they're going on that, and before we could discuss where we wanted to go with this. So, if anybody has any other thoughts at this point.
I mean, I'd like to save them the work of even doing that, to be honest, because I feel like this is kind of overstepping our boundaries, or authority, really. From how I read this, and I'm certainly not an expert on gun control and gun laws, but I think most of this already is in place in Massachusetts. And this is calling for something from like all 50 states. I just don't even want to go there and get into that. I think every state needs to advocate for its own state rights, and so I'm just, if we want to have this discussion again, that's fine, but I'd actually like to just save them the work and say, I honestly don't think that we should be getting into this political debate as school committee members.
Anyone else have?
I'll save your comments for Ed, as my permission.
Okay. All right. Okay. That, I understand your point, and so let's hear from Ed too, and then we'll decide whether to support it or not. So that's that. And then the other thing that I just wanted to check if any of you, I received an email from the Metco Board of Directors. They are having a, I didn't know if only I got it, or if everybody got it. They're having an event, a welcome reception for the new Metco Executive Director.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you know?
Okay. So, anyone is welcome to attend. I will forward this to everyone, but it is on Thursday, April 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, in Boston, at the ABCD Building. And so they are...
I didn't plan to.
Okay, yeah. And I was thinking of going, so if anybody would like to join. And the invitation does say, anyone, additional people are welcome. So that's a chance to meet her and hear more about what her vision is for Metco. So I will forward that to everyone.
And speaking of Metco, at our next meeting, we have a report, a program review, if you will, on the Metco program. It's on the original schedule, so we'll look forward to Andrew coming at that meeting.
Okay. Okay, new business. To receive MCAS 2.0 assessment planning update for spring 2018. Jamie, are you gonna?
Yes. So I will briefly address our sort of preparation relative to the spring's administration, and then I'll draw your attention as a bit of sort of heads-up of what's to come. We received a report, Dot and I, at the superintendent's roundtable meeting last week, by Bob Lee, who is the chief analyst for MCAS at the state, talking about the state's move toward the new competency determination for our Grade 10 students. So I'll first start by saying, as you know, last spring, we piloted elementary and middle school, the administration of the new assessment online. By all accounts, that went very well, in terms of testing and student access to the assessment. We are preparing again for the rollout of the online assessment this spring. The schools are all preparing to run infrastructure trials, where they actually test out their internal mechanisms, ensure the test is pushing, and the students have been working with their teachers all year. Online assessment is becoming more, used more frequently in classrooms, to sort of have kids sort of be used to that sort of testing style. So that, really, the plans for the spring are really going without a hitch, and it's going quite smoothly. What I do want to sort of bring your attention to, though, is the sort of the transition plan over the next few years, to set a new competency determination based on the performance of the Next Generation MCAS assessment. So the current standard will be held for our current sophomores, until the point which they graduate, that the class of 2020. So that, so this grid, I think, it gives a nice summary of sort of the rollout over the next few years. So our, for this, for this school year, our students in Grade 10 will take the legacy assessment. Next spring will be the first time where the Next Generation assessment is administered to our high school students. So at this point, our students in grades three through eight would have taken it twice. Our current ninth graders would have taken it as eighth graders, right, last year. So they'll take it in Grade 10 in next spring. For the class of 2021, which is the current freshman, and 2022, which is the current eighth grade, their competency determination will be set by an equal percentile linking statistical analysis that the state plans to do, to ensure that the same proportion of students, for example, who might get a warrant, get in any of the four performance categories this spring, will have the same proportion of kids in the new categories for the next test. So the class of 2021 and 2022 are sort of an interim standard, based on the actual results coming out of the Grade 10 assessment in the spring of 2019, if that makes sense. So they'll be setting the determination for the soft, the current freshman in eighth grade, when we actually get the first set of results coming out next spring. The class that will have the new determination, that again, is yet to be determined, will be the current seventh graders, the class of 2023, when they eventually get to Grade 10. So we're looking at school year 2020 to 2021, as being the point at which the new, the board will set the new criteria. What I will say is, this is all being overseen by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, similar to your, our relationship relative to superintendent and a school committee. It's a similar setup with the Board of Education, with the commissioner. And so the current, the current class of, the current of Grade 10, rather, will be legacy, so they will have the sort of standard, they'll take the old MCAS this coming spring. Our freshmen and eighth graders will take the Next Generation assessment, and then our current seventh graders will have the new competency determination to be set once the test has been administered, and the board has an opportunity to review the results. The presentation is included in your packet, which goes in far more detail, and actually, many of the slides you might recognize from my Next Generation MCAS presentation the fall, where I sort of gave you the same sense of where the test came from. There are a lot of questions to come, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up. Both Dot and I first got this last week, and felt that it was worthy enough to share, to sort of give you a sense of what the plan is and what's to come. But again, MCAS for grades three through eight, preparations are underway, and we expect a smooth administration this spring, similar to our administration last spring. But this is really, because this, the competency determination is what dictates a diploma, right? That's why it's worthy of discussion this far out, is, given the change in the proportion of kids in the various performance categories that we saw in grades three through eight, we're just thoughtful of what this is going to look like when we actually get to the class of 2023. But again, it's years off, but again, I wanted to share with this with you, as it became available to us.
But what we also have to pay attention to is the technology piece, because the new test will be online, and so that's 300 or so youngsters that need to be tested simultaneously. And we want to be sure that we have enough testing sites for that. That wasn't a problem in the eighth grade, when we're testing a whole grade, because those students all have Chromebooks, and so they could be tested on those. So it's something that we have to check on, and make sure that we have the sufficient number of computers, so that all kids can be tested in the same sitting.
That's next year.
Yes, it's not this year.
It's in 2019.
And I would suggest that we not plan on carrying over Chromebooks for a fourth year, for achieving that. Because I know, my daughter, who's in eighth grade, her Chromebook has been a little iffy several times. Just battery, I mean, it's just...
We would be using the Chromebook cards that we have, and the labs, and then add another card, or possibly another lab to do that. But it's a good point.
Okay. Any other questions on that? I had one other question, do you know off the top of your head? What's the status of the accountability system review?
So the, in terms of what it will require...
So when they're gonna finalize, so we're now a Level 1 and a Level 2 school, and they're coming up with a new system...
Correct.
...to sort of redefine that, based on the new tests.
So the first opportunity we had to hear about that was actually Friday morning, at a conference in El Grande.
Oh, I had no idea.
And so I can hold together, maybe for our next meeting, a little overview of accountability, and sort of what the state's projecting will be in the accountability model.
So that they like unveiled a draft of it for comment?
Yeah, they sort of talked about where, what the department was, where they were leaning toward in their thinking. Because remember, there was early discussions on social-emotional, there was early discussions about adding in other metrics in. And so, given our schedules, I was not able to attend on Friday, but we will find out and pass along sort of a memo, sort of a status update of where they're at right now with their accountability system. But I don't know off the top of my head what the components will be, but I do know that they have been, on Friday, actually, at the state held a conference, where they unveiled sort of their initial thoughts on the new accountability structure. So more to come, and perhaps at our next meeting, which was the 6th, I can prepare a memo for you, you know where we are with that.
Okay. That would be great. Okay. Then do you think the new commissioner will, I guess there's not a lot that...
Most of it was recognition of the board, and so it's, that's going to be tricky, but there is, they are, I do know from colleagues at work there, that they're sort of in a holding pattern until he arrives this summer, so...
He's not officially, he's been appointed, but hasn't officially taken over. There's a date coming up, that's his official stance.
I think it's in the spring, I think it's like July 1st.
I think it's early than July 1st, but it's not yet.
Okay.
I think we should give the class of 2021 a little commendation when they graduate, because they've essentially been our test case.
Yeah.
They were the first first grade east in that whole thing. They were the first sixth grade, and they're the first new MCAS. So they deserve a little...
They've placed a trail for us.
We'll get them colored ropes.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, good. Now, 6.2, to discuss the fiscal '19 operating budget status and act as appropriate. So there have been several votes by other committees since the last time we met, and if I can...
This chart, we updated it today, just in hand, putting, because we had not talked at all about capitals, we added that one.
So, for the first time in my experience, the selectmen and the advisory committee voted a different number. And so Dot, John and I were at the advisory committee meeting when they voted their number, and their operate, their number for us, for the operating budget, was slightly more than the selectmen, but then advisory committee's number for the capital budget was slightly less. So we kind of netted out very close to, you know, similar amounts in total. So, what, I didn't, well, Ed's not here tonight, so I didn't know if we wanted to, until March 26th, if we wanted to vote to confirm the total number tonight, so the town knows where we're going, either the selectmen's number or the advisory committee number. But then Dr. Gal is going to take us through some recommendations on itemization, and I would like to talk about the itemization tonight, but not vote that until our next meeting, because I think more will happen, and we can all digest each other's thoughts too, of formalizing that itemization also. So why don't, Dot, do you want to take us through what additional information you have before we start? And does anybody have any questions or comments at this point, on any of this?
The forecast is also here.
Oh, yeah, this, today I sent you sort of the, that's what the advisory committee voted, and how, so then how that sheet looks.
I'm sorry, these are hard to read, but I think you have the copies, but they are not PowerPoints, they're paper, paper copies that we tried to expand. Or you might have to use the paper copy.
I don't think that's in, I don't see it in the packet anywhere, Dot. The thing that you put in...
No, yeah, it isn't in the packet, and the reason it isn't, it's very complicated. But it was easier to work, to work through it. So we'll have to use the paper copy, because it was in here, and now has disappeared.
It's separate though.
Excuse me?
It's separate, it's not in the main menu, it's another attachment.
Oh, I know what it is, I'm sorry. I know exactly where it is. It is...
But it's separate from the agenda.
No, it's on my, it's on my desktop. So there are two sides, and I'm going to suggest we use not the blue and white one, but the other one. Because it's, this is a good summary of where we are.
I'm trying to get to the...
Hold that gray bar. The other one, yep.
I think they're put in in the reverse order.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, so again, we can't really get this much bigger, because it isn't a PowerPoint slide. But does the audience have some...
Yeah, the audience has a copy of this.
Okay. So this is a summary of where we were, and how far we've come, through a combination of reductions that reflected changes, that mainly changes in personnel, that we became aware of, and then more recently, the recommendations for changes in actually reducing the requests that we made. So if you look at the very top, where it says 1,310,999, that's the sum of all of the new things that we requested. And some of those, we pulled out of there, and then some of them, I have recommendations for removing, and what I think is most essential for us to keep. So that first section is about the 1,310,999. So the things that we had already talked about removing, not from funding, but removing from that category of funding, were the search, where we were going to certainly continue with that, but to use a revolving account. And that's really become more appropriate, because you're beginning talking about that now, and the idea of actually contracting with a vendor this spring would make it come under this year's budget anyway. The 2,000, that math workshop, that's really professional development, so we are going to do that, but that's going to be covered under Jamie's professional development budget. The one-time supplies for the social-emotional program, remember that... remember, that's a brand-new purchase of materials. And so, there'll be an ongoing cost of those materials in the amount of $30,000. But there's a bigger one-time cost in the first year because of the teacher materials that go with them. So, we said we'll pull the teacher materials out as the one-time and do them under this year's budget, which again is appropriate because we're gonna be ordering them this spring. And then, the other 30 still remained under the $1,310,999. And so, those total changes that you already were made aware of come to $27,200. And then, we'll talk in a minute about the actual recommendations about the other new things that we had requested. But they break down into 887,848, of the ones that I think really are the most essential for our program. And the others being deferred to another year most likely, but not funded for this year, would be 385,951. And those two categories make up the entire $1,310,999. So, they're in two categories. One, actual reductions, and one, the things that we talked about doing in another way. Then, if you look at where we were at the end of the advisory committee meeting the other night, we had a school committee budget that you voted on the 26th. And that was 52,622,818. And that was the amount that we had at the end of the joint meeting. That was the figure that school committee voted. Adcom voted 52,006,697 last week. In a sense, the money, the amount that the selectmen voted isn't relevant to this discussion because it's the advisory committee number that will be the recommendation on the floor of town meeting. And so, the difference in those two, what the school committee had voted and therefore was the number in the forecast, was a difference of 616,121. That became a target. That's the gap figure, and that was the target we then needed to achieve. But between the time of the joint meeting where we determined, which became your vote, and now, there were some other reductions that we were able to make. And they were in the amount of $86,709. And they reflected some personnel changes, an unanticipated retirement, and some other changes that were related to leaves and comings and goings. So, that was a figure that we hadn't presented to you at the time of last week's meeting because we didn't have all of them or the meeting of the 26th. So, they were not reflected or embedded in your vote figure, which is the 52,622,818. And then, the suggested reductions of the 395,551, that would be up above. It's the section of the remaining $1,310,999 that we are not recommending go forward. So, if you then take those two things, the total additional reductions becomes 482,660. And if you then look back at the gap that existed as of last Thursday night of 616,121, that gives us a remaining 133,461 to go. That's a number that I think is attainable in that we do anticipate at least one more retirement. And there still are some comings and goings in terms of people requesting new leaves. And also, if we aren't able to get to that figure, then there are some other things that we may have to consider cutting. Now, I do understand that, you know, you may all have different ideas. But this is a starting point. It's a path that gets us to the balanced budget, if you will, and to alignment with the figure that advisory committee voted. So, we now go to the other slide on the other side. The other slide is entirely about, the blue and white one, entirely about the $1,310,999. So, if you look at the breakdown here, there's one section that says things that I believe, we believe here, are the most essential of the things that we had proposed originally. And then, you look at the things we've already partially reduced or planned partially to reduce because some of these things we can't afford to fund in full. And then, where it says retracted, those are things that under this proposal wouldn't be funded. And obviously, it's going to be your decision in the end. So, there could be mix matching or whatever. But this is the recommendation. So, the things that we believe it's really important to keep are the adjustment counselors, and there are two. One, either a guidance or an adjustment counselor for the middle school. The other, the adjustment counselor for the high school. So, you can see them listed. And the way things are listed here is how they appeared in the original list of new ads. And if you look out to the, way out to the right, there's the noting of what piece of a person it is. And so, we have one each of those. There is still the elementary kindergarten teacher in there. And that's something that could change in the next couple of weeks when we have the kindergarten enrollment fully in. We did, are suggesting that the other elementary teacher, which was simply one to give us the same number of classes that we have this year, we, I recommend not be in this funding. Then, we have the new para requests. And that's a difficult one because $72,000 is a lot of money. That actually represents services that go with individually named children. So, it's not one where we can say, well, we'll get half of that amount of money. This is specific hours for specific children or child. And so, that has to go as a whole unit unless we get some further information that something changes, that a new IEP is written. They could make that number bigger or smaller. But right now, we feel we have to keep that amount intact. We think the special education liaison stipends are very important. We really need to work on better coordination within each of the buildings. It would be great if we could have a special ed director, if you will, in each of the buildings. We can't afford that at this point. But we think this is something worth trying to enhance the coordination both between the building, among the buildings, and between the buildings and central office. And the special education teachers, there are three of those. One for the middle school, which would be with a focus on providing more co-taught classes. One for the high school, where the focus is on the same thing, additional co-taught classes. And one for a skills group of students, which we already have in the middle school, but where additional children are moving from the middle school, making it very likely that we will need a second skills class at the middle school. So, those three teachers add up to the 206,628. And so, if we then look at the things that we need but can't fully fund, the text materials, or teaching materials that we're using for the HTSS, we already talked about that. $30,000 would appear here in the fund. And the $5,200 is something that we're going to accommodate with this year's text budget. And so, that's why that is there. It's partial. And the elementary math tutors, which fifth year, we requested that. We can't afford to fund the whole thing, which was 50 hours for each of the four schools. And 50 hours broke into two 25-hour people. So, I've recalculated that to at least be able to get some help in those schools. And instead of 50 hours per building, four times 50, it would be 30 hours in each of the building. And they can break that however they want. They could break it into 215s, or they could break it into a 20 and a 10, or whatever meets their, meets their needs. So, that is, in a sense, three fifths funded. So, 147,362 would be the part that's included. And the 98,241 would not be funded under this plan. And then, the secondary teachers, we really need some secondary staffing. So, the recommendation is to do what we've had to do some other times. And that is to, instead of allocating specifically now, you know, one social studies teacher and two science teachers and all of that adding up to the 5.1 FTEs in that category, we would recommend breaking that into an allocation of 2.7 FTEs that we would fund and 2.4 FTEs that we could not fund. And we'd make the decision as to where those FTEs would go at the time that Jamie and I meet with the secondary principals and all the department directors in early May. And they each could present a case for how many FTEs they need. And we would have to allocate them according to what the greatest need seems to be and the most children impacted, and so on. So, to fund 2.7 for secondary, and some of those would be middle school and some would be high schools. So, when we say secondary, we're thinking of the 7 through 12 range. It would be 208,608 that we would recommend being funded. And the remainder, 159,575, not being funded. So, if you move further on down that column, you'll note that there is a total of $887,848 of things from that original list that we would fund. And then, in the middle-looking column, those are the things that we could not fund, and those are listed. And out to the right, down in the right-hand corner, it all comes out to $1,310,999. And again, that's a combination of what we fund, what we don't fund, what we've partially funded, and what we have taken care of in another way in a prior meeting. So, that's the recommendation. As I say, it's a path. It does leave us with a gap still of 133. But given that we have one teacher in here, that's possibly something that we're not going to need. And also, that we have some changes that I anticipate, that's not a bad place for us to be. And we can look at it again, of course, at the next meeting and see what real changes there are. And perhaps what we did last year, which I think worked out well, was we actually had a category that this is what we have to fund. But if there are additional resources, another unanticipated retirement, for example, then the school committee indicated a list of priorities, which are things that they would like to see go into the list of funded things if in fact we were able to realize more than the 133 gap that we're at now. So.
Okay. Great. Does anyone have any questions on this first before we start? So, what do you guys, what's on your mind? I asked everybody to think about how you would prioritize this $1.3 million. Does anyone have thoughts or things you would potentially do differently?
Dot, just a quick question. The items on the top, the above, would you say those are listed according to priority? I know they're all very, very important.
No, they're not. They're simply in the order that they appear. So, no.
So, for me, the para requests would probably be number one because those have to be fulfilled, correct?
Well, unless there's some change between now and then with a, you know, we have a lot of IEPs this time of year. Something could change. But those were for specific kids. But I would monitor that number because, you know, it's a big number. And if we don't need those specific hours, it would be something that we might want to trade off.
How about the three sped teachers? Could you, the three sped teachers? Could you talk about, if you had to put A, B, C, and I hate for you to do that, but we're talking about three teachers. Is one a little bit more of a priority than another?
I don't think they are, honestly. I know, you know, we have the special ed evaluation that's about to begin at the middle school. And we expect, and certainly also know that a priority of parents is, we do need more co-taught classes. We just don't have them. And the problem now is that the number of assigned special ed teachers in the middle school and the high school, given the load of students they have there, and given the fact that at the high school, two of the seven teachers they have teach sub-separate classes, which means you have two teachers that are managing a total of maybe seven or eight children, and then only five to manage the hundred and something other children. And those other five have duties that include sharing, sharing team meetings, running the, the.
Is it?
No, no.
Sorry.
The strategies classes. And also, having some duties in terms of going into classrooms for co-teaching. And the team meetings have to happen, so they have to run those meetings. The strategies classes are built into the IEPs. And so, they have relatively little time to get into actual classrooms and co-teach with another teacher. And that's true in both the middle school and the high school, that we have seven or so, I think it's seven in each case, special ed teachers. But in each case, we have two of those that will be tied up with a very small group of children that are in a sub-separate environment. And that's appropriate for those children. And so, again, the others have to assume the responsibilities for the strategies classes and for the, for co-teaching. And there aren't that many periods they can co-teach, so.
Are there, because you have a total here for all three. Are they equally valued salary-wise?
Well, what we tend to do when we're budgeting for secondary positions, we tend to budget at M5, master's degree step five. Doesn't mean on a teacher-by-teacher basis when we hire that we can get what we put in the budget. But overall, when we do all of our hiring for the year, we hope it comes out on balance and always has. We've never overspent our budget. But M5 is what we budget unless it's a position where, let's say, we had a person that was part-time, and we moved that person to full-time, and that person might be at some rate other than M5. But just as a rule of thumb, if it's a brand-new person coming in, we budget them at M5. And that's why you see all those 68s. Anytime it's a truly new individual, we use that figure.
That's my question. And then, I guess.
Let Kate finish.
Sorry, yeah, just one last question on the school text. Were these texts chosen because of the survey that was done?
Let Jamie answer that.
No, there's no.
These were previously planned, these new texts, the HTSS materials.
Yes. So, the survey was focused more on the needs of, social emotional needs of the student population, the perceptions of our teachers, and perceptions of our community. The texts are going into that tier. When you think about the triangle model, they're for direct instruction. They're for sort of tier-one programming. The services, the supports, the direct instruction that all students will receive. And that, we do not, right now, have a comprehensive program that does that.
It would be similar, though, to when we did the steps to respect and the second step, those kinds of materials that everybody would get instructed in.
Right.
But those are outdated materials.
And that's a mandate, correct?
Right. It's the comprehensive health framework. Yeah. It's an actual curriculum framework.
I think it would be helpful to see this more prioritized from the administration. The mandate things, to me, are...
I know, and the problem is when there are things that really are related to requirements and mandates, it's hard to prioritize them. I mean, obviously, if we had no money or only half as much money...
I think Kay's saying, like, they have to be at the top because we have to do them.
Yeah.
So, those are number one and then...
Just to try to, to grasp over the numbers of, there's no budging with those numbers at all because they are mandated.
Essentially. I mean, the services are mandated.
Carlos, do you?
I guess what I would say is those are the priorities.
Yeah. They might need to be at the top, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I would say that I appreciate Dr. Gallo, you know, you had with your team and coming up with additional suggestions to close the gap that we are pretty close. I like the fact that you kept those items that you have been advocating for a long time, that the community have been asking for it, so I can appreciate that. And the question I have is opioid screening regulation. DPH, DPH is not giving us any money whatsoever?
The opioid?
Screening?
I don't know. There is a note there and I should have mentioned it. In the case of the opioid, we finished the middle school screening and we did it with slightly less than what we had budgeted and we finished the, and we haven't quite finished the high school. But I do think that we can reduce that number to more like four thousand and that we would make it a permanent part, if you will, of the health budget, the nurses' budget. In fact, as I think about that, that's what we should have done with it in the first place. We should have put it in that budget as a requirement, as a new cost of a new service, but we should have put it there rather than as a new item to begin with.
Carlos, the opioid training, the state paid for the training of the nurses and that was it?
Not for the screening.
And not for the actual implementation?
It was under the impression...
And only through December, by the way.
Yeah, it was under the impression they were going to provide us with some...
Well, I think that that was what this lawsuit kind of thing was all about, was that we believed that it was an unfended mandate because we all believed that that money would come directly to districts and it didn't. And so, I think we have to make it part of our budget, but I think we can do it a little bit less than we budgeted. So, we would put it into the nurses' category. And as I say, we should have put it, we think about it now, we should have put that right into the original base budget because it's the cost of doing business now, even though it is a new service. But you can make that argument for some of these other things here as well. There are new costs of doing what we need to do, particularly with respect to special ed and in the case of looking where, at what everyone is looking at it, this whole social-emotional kind of crisis, we need to provide those services. They're not optional choices, they're not new programs in the sense of buying a new technology or something like that. It's frustrating because they are mandate-related.
Doc, can you, the math tutors thing we've been asking for for years, it's a little nebulous still sadly in my head what that actually means. So, what, if you were to describe to me what a math tutor would do for five hours a week at an elementary school, what would that be?
They would be working with children that are struggling in math.
One-on-one?
Yes, or a small group if you have kids that are in the same place.
So, like an RTI kind of thing, only for math?
Yes, a good way to put it, an RTI kind of thing.
So, the, I don't mean to interrupt, but the RTI in reading is delivered through the support of the reading specialists and then sort of these, a suite of tutors.
Right.
We do not have that in mathematics.
Okay.
We have two reading specialists for four buildings for one thing.
Two math specialists.
And two, for two math specialists.
The only schools that get, that have math tutors got them through Title I funding through an addition to the tune of roughly eighty, twenty, twenty rather, hours a week. And so, when we look at particularly our academic achievement results, particularly in the area of mathematics at the middle school level, it's not just happening at middle school, like the foundation is built early. And so, the part of the thinking around that was, well, if we can't fund the full-time math specialist, let's at least get some support in place for mathematics, sort of skill development early, just like we do for reading and sort of see if we see a similar trajectory in the long-term with our reading, with our math scores that we do in our reading schools. We really, I think that's a, we do well, right, given what we have, but I think the reality is there is no academic intervention support for mathematics, other than the two schools that get twenty hours a week in that support through Title I.
Okay.
And you've certainly heard at the time that Jamie did the MCAS report in the fall, the concerns of some of our special ed parents, that those children don't perform in their, in their opinion, don't perform as well as children in that category in other communities. Not all children who need math support are children with special needs, but some of them are. And honestly, if those children need more time or double the time in math, we don't have any other resources to provide that. And so, that's why they've been in there all of those years to try to respond to that. Can we provide as much support in math as we provide in, in reading? Because we are well-equipped, I think, in reading in terms of the extra bodies.
Well, my only other comment would be that, and I don't have a solution, but that I think it's a shame to have to reduce the secondary teachers because that's where the bulk of, you know, it's getting bigger at the high school and the middle school and...
Some classes are getting bigger and sometimes it's, it's just that numbers don't break well.
Yeah.
So, you know, you can have two different years with the same staffing, but depending upon how numbers break. And because we have a lot of singletons, which is good, we have a very, very curriculum and we have a lot of singletons and so, there are times we can, we can do what we need to do with one more class. And so, we divvy those FTEs up. And the department directors are very creative in terms of how they present things. I think we do a lot with what we have to be able to maintain the breadth of the curriculum and, and class sizes to the extent that we're able to. So, nobody's going to go without here because it's a big, big program, but there may be some additional classes that we either can't offer because we can't, we can't afford one more class for a singleton. But, you know, we usually can be creative and come up with a good program and, but you're right, that's, and why does it get there? Well, two things happen. One is because we have the breadth of curriculum we have, there are a lot of FTEs to run that program, number one, and number two, that when we look at things like class size, the elementary level gets more focused because one teacher has all of those students every day, whereas the elementary might, at secondary, you might have one small class and four large. But the other problem at secondary is that it's not just class size, it's teacher load. So, secondary teachers have anywhere from typically ninety kids to one hundred and twenty-five or one hundred and thirty. And if you have one hundred and thirty children, that's one hundred and thirty essays, that's one hundred and thirty parent contacts, that's one hundred and thirty of everything and they have those children every day, so. So, it's a balancing act and I think we have a good process, we all get together, it's very collaborative and, and we make it work.
Michelle, Amy?
Yeah.
All right. Tell it today.
Okay. These priorities pretty much mesh with mine except for the central office support. And I would ask on, and only because it's really hard to make a hard decision, but on the liaison stipends for the sped, I'd almost flip those just because I know with central office that that is, you know, we have some challenges in that area too. And I'm wondering with the sped liaisons, I know that that's really needed and vital. I'm just wondering if maybe it's needed more because we have a new director in or if the new director could change the way things are going in their own way of looking at things in a different way, that maybe we wait on instituting a new practice until that person has a chance to make their own assessment and judgment, whereas to get that central office support, we, we know we're backed up and we know that getting some more central office support, we could get some other things done in central office that, so that's, I'm throwing that out there.
And I actually do agree with that theory, if that's possible. And I hadn't thought about that, but since we do have a new person coming on in that role, then maybe...
Yeah, I would only say, and, you know, that, that office requires a lot of work.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah.
So, it's not that they, it's not just that we want to try something, we want to have a situation that a new person can manage.
Yeah.
We don't want to put forth something unreasonable, but, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, you could suggest we do. Or maybe one of those things is something you could say, we could do this if we have dollars other than the one thirty-three, I mean, those kinds of things.
That's, that's what I was going to say. I was thinking the same thing about the central office support, but I don't like the idea of getting rid of the stipend, but my thought would be, but if there's another, if another seventeen thousand comes up, then I would make the central office support sort of the next thing to fund.
Like just bumped up.
Right. Because that's the thing, I mean, that's what I get afraid of, right? Good people are going to get burned out and leave when you could have fixed that.
Because you could make the same case for the central office support in that if, in fact, we hope to have a person, human resources kind of role in the subsequent year, then maybe that person would rather have his or her own choice, you know, so.
Yeah, just who knows when we're going to get that person, so, yeah. Okay.
But those are, those are the kinds of thoughts that we need to consider, absolutely.
So...
The other things there, that language lab would be a nice thing to have, to preserve our equipment and make sure it's running when the teachers are in there, but the fact is we're living without that this year and we, you know, continue that way. So, that's something that I see is much less essential. The opioid screening, we already talked about.
Well, we have an idea by our March twenty-sixth meeting of how we're doing with kindergarten enrollment.
Yes, we should have, yeah. The actual enrollment will be period, be done.
It'll be done.
And so, we'll have a sense of that.
So, that'll, that'll help us a lot.
That will help a lot, exactly.
And that's what I thought and that's why I didn't want to vote anything until then because that could solve a lot of problems.
Can we just wait to vote the whole thing? I think Ed should be here for that.
Yep.
Big vote.
Yeah, and, and we only have, that's our last meeting until the meeting at town meeting. So, we do have to vote on March twenty-sixth. I feel it's important for the community to hear our vote in advance of town meeting. So, that's something we do have to, I think we should focus on wrapping it up at that meeting. But I think this gets us a lot closer and we can fine-tune it for the next time. Great, so, we will reconvene on that budget then.
And if, in fact, there are already changes in the next two weeks, so get them to you before the meeting so you can have time to think about what that means in terms of your priorities.
All right. Now, six point three, to hear an update on the planned school enrollment and projection process.
So, we have been working with, or the school building committee has been working with us on this because it's essential to the cross-the-school project and also is important in a more general way as part of the overall master plan that Long Range and John are working on as well. You have it in front of you, I'll tell you, but we needed to get three quotes because this is not something that we have to go out to bid for, so we did secure three quotes. One of them was from Nesdeck and we've worked with Nesdeck a number of times before and happy with their services. A second one was from the Donahue Institute at UMass Boston. They do lots of things, they're kind of a data crunching group and so, they do many things in addition to the kind of a projection that we would need to move forward with NSBA and that we would like for our master plan. And the other was a group, McKibben, and they worked with Arlington High School and several other places on the Situate and I think they got two other quotes from them. So, we considered, we shared all of that information with the building committee and got them to, thinking about it, shared some sample work from each of those groups. We checked some references and then at the school building committee meeting last week, we came to consensus that the best product for our needs and wants and familiarity of the group, the fact that Nesdeck would come and meet with us prior to beginning, particularly to look at things that might be new and different that they might not think about in our town and for us, we're very concerned about getting some, some projections for the two big projects, the Avalon and the Broad Street project, and also thinking about some other things that are, that are on the, on the horizon of the radar, a possible project off of Void Street and some others. So, we determined that Nesdeck would be the group that we would select. You have a little check sheet there. There weren't huge differences in the, in the prices. And in fact, contacted Nesdeck the next day, they were thrilled to be contacted, we've done the purchase order and so, I'm in the process of, I got an email just before I left for this meeting and I'll get back to them tomorrow, hopefully. We're looking for them to come to a, an upcoming building committee meeting so we can use that group and John, John and I are part of that to kind of brainstorm about what are the things that someone coming in looking at him needs to know that's happening here now, in addition to all of the data that we will give them. We'll give them the last ten years' worth of data. In fact, they were one of the vendors that did what turned out to be ultimately two separate independent projections back when we were writing the original master plan that resulted in the East School, the Middle School, the, some renovations to Foster and Plymouth River. And so, we know them and in fact, the folks that would be working with us would actually be people that were here at that time as well, that still work there. So, so we're hoping to get started as soon as we can get them in here. You know, they have a fairly short window, six to eight weeks they can get the study done. Once they've contacted, they would go to the building department, they would go to the clerk's office in addition to meeting with us. So, we're excited about that and that amount of money is within the amount of money that we had when we, when you voted to allocate money to the building committee to do the site work that has... to do the site work that has been done. So, and that's part of this year's budget, FYI-18 budget. And so, so excited about getting started on that.
Great. Okay, yeah. I know that the planning board did a long range plan just a year ago or so. That would probably be helpful for them.
For them to look at, okay, good suggestion.
Cause that'll take into account some development stuff. Okay. Great, so this is an FYI for us, but it's important for just as we keep moving along. Okay, 6.4, to discuss the exploration of possible changes in school-related fees, including athletic and other parent-paid user fees. So when we were in the midst of the budget, we had talked about considering athletic fees and we said we would table that. And so now that we're almost done with the budget process and we said we'd take it up after that. So I just wanna share some thoughts of where I thought we would go so that we didn't lose track of this either. So there are kind, two related issues. So one is we were talking about specifically athletic fees. And then the other are all of our other fees, tuitions. Also, we've talked several times about, you know, what have come out, what money comes out of parents' pockets too. And so Dot and I were talking about this and we thought it would be good to, you know, separate this for, as specific athletic fees and for, you know, handful of school committee members to work with the athletic director to look at, you know, what are our costs? What are benchmark towns? And he's already working on what do other towns charge and how do they charge? So specifically look at athletics. But then to also separately, and you know, maybe we get two, I'm thinking, I'll get two people to work on athletic fees, two people to start working on benchmarking other towns about what they charge with fees and collect. And also somebody can start collecting from our own schools of what are the fees that parents pay? So we can start talking about what's our philosophy of charging fees? And if we can develop some kind of vision of an explanation to the community of what's the purpose of the fees? Is it simply to supplement the budget? Get us over tough times? Or is, do we consider these things extras that, you know, are not specific to the academic program but are nice to have? Is it a combination thereof? Do we see certain fees that eventually we want the town budget to absorb? Or do we want to add other things that we've, you know? Where are we going? But I was thinking that first we, we should collect some data so that we know where we are. And then we can schedule some times to start talking about it and delve into it a little bit more. So that's where I was going on it of, you know, separating it into two tasks. Thoughts?
So I, I take it there is real, there's no data yet collected. We would have to then what? Ask teachers to say, please let us know what you charge for what? I mean, has there been anything done in the past? Or is this, we're working from a clean slate?
You mean in the past as in this year?
No, just in general. I mean, has anything been done looking at fees? And then do we need to then ask who's trying? I mean, how, how do you go about collecting all that data?
I had spoken earlier after this came up in the fall with Jim, excuse me, Quattramoni and with Rick about getting some data. And Jim was going to start collecting data from the league. So I believe he's already collected that. In the past, when topic of fees has come up, it really has been handled in different ways. For example, when we put the Kids in Action program in, it was very clear that the goal of that program was to meet needs of families. But that, that program was always intended to be self-supporting, self-sustaining. And in fact, it's more than that in that they, you know, they pay their own health insurance. They pay us rent. They pay us some small amount on utilities, that kind of thing. So there was a goal there. And so when that fee was developed, it was developed by the staff of the program that we had hired at, at the time and mainly the director to come forth with a proposal that would meet the costs because she was aware of the costs. When we did the full-day kindergarten, the philosophy at the time was at some point it would be self-supporting. I don't know if that's ever reasonable. But there was not the intent that that tuition at the time would cover all, all costs. And so in fact, that fee was put together by the committee that was bringing forth the full-day proposal. So every one of these things is kind of a different genesis. And so, you know, I agree with, with Lizer. I think that if we want to have people setting fees and keeping them up to date as we go along, we have to know what is the goal. So the goal of one fee might be to be a self-supporting program. The goal of the athletic fees was really to be able to allow us to keep a vibrant program and a wide range of offerings. And so the feeling at the time was that we can expect that the town should be doing something about athletics because having a good athletic program is a mainstay of any good high school. So we should expect the town to support it. But if we want the program to be more vibrant with that and more sports and so on, then we like believe that the families and the citizens should pay. That's it, you know, so everyone has a kind of a different philosophy. But lately, we've just tried to, to add dollars to the budget, which is not a bad goal. But it makes it hard for anyone who's going to determine what the fee should be if we don't have the underlying philosophy. And so that's where I think we need to have many of you, if not all of you, involved in that because there, there are certainly differences of opinion about that. And I'm not here to say one is a better idea than the other, but we need to get that squared away. Then it's easy to get a group of the athletic department staff, coaches and, and the, and the director, maybe some teachers and some parents, perhaps representing the youth groups to come together on, within this framework, then what should the fee be in a given year? So I think we've gotten stuck last fall, particularly because we had a number of different fees we needed to set in a fairly short time. And, and it really wasn't clear what we were attempting to do with the fees.
I think it's a combination of places that we have to gather the information from. So I think that, I think there are fees that, like John knows the fees that, you know, Kids in Action, the kindergarten tuition, some of the, like the standard fees we have. But then in the schools, I think we need to figure out how to do it, but communicate possibly to each principal and then have the principal say, okay, fill out this Google form. Maybe we can, you know, compile something that way. Every teacher, if you charge for a magazine subscription, you know, can you fill this in? And then also go to the PTOs and serve as a check and balance of, you know, what are you covering in the classroom? And then, you know, then the middle school has their activity fee and then they have the magazine drive. And so what do all those things cover? And I don't know each elementary school, but each elementary school might structure themselves differently. And then, and that, but then there's also like Family and Consumer Science where there's a fee, materials fee that you pay. Honestly, those are all the things I wanna, I would like to have a database of all of these things because, and even trips and, you know, is it an optional trip? Is it, you know, like the Washington DC trip? I think, you know, I think we need to compile it all and really understand the scope and then come up with a philosophy of, what are we gonna do and some goal-setting for all of them? And I also think we should look at other towns because, not that I ever want to do it, but you know, some towns charge a bus fee as another kind of fee. So, or what other fees do people charge? Or do they not charge? So, but.
Yeah, I would be interested in looking at the, the spaces that we generate some revenue that we've been utilizing to offset some of the costs. Like to see, talking in particular about athletics, you know, sports and so on. If we have a handle on what sports are offered by the school directly and then those indirectly. Because some may be indirectly run by a, an association or a group such as the Rowan, right?
Oh, yeah.
Right? And we may have more than them. I mean, I'm not sure if there is others. I would like to see how much money we are actually raising by renting the soccer fields. You know, even over here at the high school. When, see if we have a good handle in how much money we are bringing in, perhaps we can start in the future, set an aside budget for each one of the sports where they can sort of like say, okay, you have so much money so you can utilize the soccer field, you know, up to this amount. Any additional amount, you would have to sort of like, out of that money that we have allocated to you, pay back. Like pay to rent that. You know what I mean? And I know it's a, it's, it's a hard thing to come up with. But at the state, what we do is we have this space. This space has to be taking care of it, whether it's by maintenance or whatever. There's money there for that. But when the service is provided, they sort of like invoices the different department. Although money's not coming out, at least, you know, they keep in track of how much money is being expended by each department. I think we should, we have to do that with the field as well. I'm not sure, I mean, I see sometimes we waste opportunity in raising fun, raising money. You know, the concession stands and day of a sport being played and all one is utilizing the concession. Could that, the school itself runs those concessions instead of depending on the boosters to run them? Could that be something else? But that's, that's just some ideas, you know? I mean, I'd like to for, you know, I mean, because this conversation can, you know, can more about raising the athletic fees. That's why we sort of like back, you know, the idea of what was? We tried to raise, what was that we tried to raise a couple months ago? And we said, well, let's just leave it alone?
Well, we talked about raising the athletic fee because we haven't raised it in five years.
Yeah.
And we decided to table it so that it was really thought through as opposed to just trying something with the budget. So, Michelle?
And I think, no, I think it's a, it's a very good idea. And I think it's sort of the, the time has come because I think I hear a lot from parents that you're, you're sort of getting the hand from everybody, right?
Yeah.
You know, from everywhere you turn around, it's all sudden, and sometimes you start feeling like there's money being raised and it's just being raised for the sake of raising money because we raise more money than the class behind us and we raise more money than, you know? And so what's it all for? Where's it all going? Are there ways to make it more equitable? Are there ways to, I mean, I have talked to some younger parents, literally with kids in the kindergarten and pre-K program who were saying, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily mind paying a little fee every year, sort of paying it forward, right? Like, oh, I pay $150 all through elementary school, probably not getting $150 worth of things. But when I get to the high school, I'd still only be paying $150. So I think people are sort of thinking about how can you, if you're gonna charge, if parents are gonna have to pay for things, how can you make it a little more equitable? So sports parents aren't paying anything.
But then we need to draw a line between a fee.
Yes.
And like, you know, do you consider the booster dues that you're asked to pay when you join a team? That's not a fee because that money's not going to the, to the schools.
Right, yes.
But, so there's two different things we're talking about. Fees and other.
But I think you have to start with figuring out what's what? What are people, what are people paying money? What are people writing checks for? Where's it all going and how we can invest?
And so, yeah, and I, I do think the first step is to get a, get a base of where we are. And I see the divide of the amount, the workload of athletics and boosters possibly, and then sort of everything else. And, and then we can, then we'll come back together and then, you know, it'll be a discussion about it. But I'd like, you know, I think we should start because I see this going into the summer. I mean, this could, it could take a while to gather information and talk through, get some input from the community and before.
But I also think we need to give some thought to how this is all going to be then put together. Because I, if you're talking about getting every single penny that every single parent spends, this is going to be an enormous amount of data.
Yeah.
And.
And it's gonna change too.
And we can't have, we can't have how that gets put together as an end product divvied up between everybody because then we're gonna end up with a bunch of different. Somebody's gonna have to sit and put all this into something. And that's going to be, I don't even know anybody's gonna have time to do that before the summer or by the end of the summer. And that's gonna be an enormous project. So I think it sounds, it sounds really great to get all this data, but I also think we need to think about before we start gathering it, what are we gonna do with it? And how, what's the reality of that? Because if, I don't want to go out and chase all this data down and then have all this data and have nobody's got the ability to put it all together in some sort of format that is useful. I want to think about that process as well.
Well, and I think the one. We have a principal here, maybe. Tony, do you mind? I mean, what are your thoughts in your school of fees charged? Or of gathering this type of information? If you don't mind me putting you on the spot.
Tony Kitty Presley's Elementary School. You know, I know that our PTO, we really think, try to be really thoughtful about how much we ask for parents to donate. So we do our annual appeal at the beginning of the year. We ask for a one-time donation. And we use that to pay for field trips, student journals as much as possible. And at some point, the students in fifth grade, parents are asked to contribute some point for end-of-year fifth grade activities. But I can speak for East Elementary PTO. We are very thoughtful about how much we ask for parents because of exactly some of the things we raise. As a parent myself, you kind of get nicked a lot. So we try to minimize what we ask for.
And nobody else, no teacher, no group, nobody else asks for any money except for PTO? Because we're talking about every penny that every parent, I think what Liza was looking for is every single penny that every parent pays for anything in any way, shape or form at school that comes out of their pocket being somehow tabulated.
I can speak freestyle much to anyone. I can say that. I'm not aware of any parent at any school that, I mean, a teacher, I should say, that asks parents directly to pay for anything. Everything is kind of done through the PTO. And our PTO pays for quite a bit. Our city field trip is paid for through the PTO, through that annual appeal. We have some scenic projects last year. You know, we did the Booster-Thon, which is a kind of a unique thing. But other than that, no teachers ask parents to pay for something goes on in the classroom. They may ask for donations of materials if they're doing this particular project, but pretty much we try to make sure that we provide everything the kids need for their education. But I can't speak for the other schools.
Yeah.
Well, they may not be entirely.
I volunteer to do it.
I mean, you know, the beginning of the year, we send out the list the teachers send out and they're, it's consistent lists of what's needed for your first, second and third grader. And people do spend a lot on those things at the beginning of the year, all the way through. And in some cases, you know, it's, if you have four or five kids, it's a lot of money. On the other hand, in other cases, you know, there'll be something on the list you have to have access to, a stapler. Well, doesn't mean you have to go out and buy a stapler. If you have a stapler in the house, that will be fine. So I think some people perhaps spend more than they need to. But we do count on that for individual supplies. But we do count on that for individual supplies and, and that, that and the PTO really are the big things at the elementary. You don't have other things that people are expected to buy. At the secondary level, it is a little bit, for example, the graphing calculators. You know, we have resources that we can provide if someone can't afford that. We can, we have some resources that we can bring to that issue with the, from the math department fund. The home ec and the family, the family consumer science and the technology, instructional technology programs have supplies. And when kids are making something for their own use, we expect those. But I think we're really, honestly, where it really gets out of control is the booster groups. Because the booster fees are established by the group and the dues or whatever, and people feel they have to pay them. And then you go to the game, I'll just take hockey because like, you know, bear in mind by hockey and so you pay your booster dues and then you go to the game. And every game, there's a fifty-fifty raffle. You pay for going to the games because they're at the rink. And so, things like that, you buy your kid's stick, you might get one stick at the beginning of the year, but you have to buy your stick and the skates and the helmet out of all things. So those kinds of costs are the ones that really grow. And they're around athletics. Around the instructional program, there's not as much.
Yeah, so I mean, and I think the PTOs could potentially help us with gathering a lot of information.
Enormous amount and foundation of course, and sports partnership.
Yeah. So, and I don't need it to be down to the penny.
No, I, I know.
But I think getting a sense of.
But if we're talking about, you know, what a person pays to be involved in the school newspaper or what a person pays to be involved in the poetry club, you know, that could be a very small amount. But it's still, there are a lot of those little things that are out there.
Yeah. And, you know, that may be something to delve into with the high school, but I would hope that we could do some kind of survey and voluntarily get people to tell us this stuff.
We want to make sure that people understand why we want the information because we don't want to raise the expectation that we're trying to tally up a bill.
Yeah.
That we're somehow gonna pay.
But, well, does, does the premise of looking at athletics and looking at others, that basic makes sense?
I would just hate for the one to slow us down with the other because I feel like they're two separate issues. And I think the athletic fees are a little bit more important right now for us to get a hold of.
Okay.
Versus all the other little fees. Now, we can still get that information and then we can try and figure out what we want to do with that information. But I feel like they're almost separate and I would hate for, because we're trying to collect everything, it slows us down from doing one thing.
Okay. I still though, do you think it's important at some point to consider the other fees? Because I'm thinking about the drama, which sounds like it's still essentially subsidizing the drama.
Could you do athletics in clubs, including drama kind of all in one?
Well, or do we want to do just the high school? And look at athletics and everything else?
Well, it's not just drama, it's drama and music.
Right, and just, just tackle the high school?
It'd be a start.
There's probably a lot more at the high school than there is at the middle school.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I'm pretty sure all the elementary schools remember PTO.
I think so too.
Yeah. Because PR has to start doing that.
But the, and then actually the other activities could inform us on the athletic fees and boosters and vice versa, maybe that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, since to some extent this stemmed from the conversation about athletic fees, maybe just limiting it to the high school would make it more manageable and give us the kind of information to at least start focusing on that issue that we need. Yeah. Okay.
You probably, you probably should look at drama and music as well.
Yeah. No, that's what we're saying, everything at the high, yeah. Look at everything, but limited to just the high school.
And even languages, because they do things, right?
Yeah.
Oh, there's a lot of different.
Student council, you know, there's. So I think concentrating on one school, we might be more effective and efficient.
Okay, that's fine.
Than trying to tackle a huge mountain of six schools.
And there are all kinds of fees that we don't charge for.
Right, yeah.
Many communities charge, for example, a transcript fee because we have, you know, large numbers of students who may apply to ten schools or twelve schools and not just, you know, two or three. That's a charge, I'm not promoting that charge, but there are charges that we don't even think about along that line.
Okay.
So we may also want to look at the benchmarking of other communities and generally what other types of things.
What do they charge?
And that might be the easier task to divvy up because then each of us could take.
One or two other towns to reach out to.
We might be able to find that online.
Or even, that might be a little bit more manageable way to start out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Would anyone like to work on one versus the other? Or we can, you can all think about it and we can talk about it again. But I do want to start working on it so that by the time we have next year's budget come around, we'll have made some kind of decision about what direction to go in, so.
Well, maybe we can collect at our own school first and then take a look at it. Like at the Hingham High School before reaching out to other towns.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
That information in front of us so I know what questions to even ask.
Okay.
From all the different departments and drama, music, language.
Okay.
All, any clubs. I don't know if. For the STEM, do they have fees?
Absolutely.
For robotics, things like that.
Absolutely.
So it'd be kind of nice to have that information first, that's what I'd like from our home school before we branch out in more research. But isn't that just something that, you know, Rick's gonna have to send out to the staff?
Yeah, do you think they could just, what do you think, John, because of the activity fund? Could we just, or do we have the list of advisors? Or should we ask Rick how he would go about communicating out to his staff? Maybe do it that way? Maybe then, and maybe Jim Quattramoni has started gathering booster information.
I think he has started gathering the, the league stuff.
Yeah, he started gathering fees now.
I don't mind, do you want me to work with John and Rick and Jim and sort of figure out the best way to collect the data? To start with?
Sure.
Okay, I can do that. Because I'm just thinking like I, like know the PTO, I already know some of them.
Okay.
Okay, I can do that. So, John, I'll call you tomorrow. No, I'll call you Wednesday.
Okay.
Sleep in tomorrow.
Great, so we will begin that task because that's gonna be a, a big one, so. Yes, Ray?
Are you finished?
Yeah, do you have a question or a comment? Yep.
Ray Astie's ninety-two Ford Hill Street, I'm just curious what the purpose of this exercise is? What's the goal? What's the policy initiative? What are you trying to accomplish?
And our budget discussions, at the beginning of our budget discussions, we were looking at a variety of tuitions and other fees. And we recognized that athletic fees has not changed for five years. And we've had a number of costs increases with coaches' salaries over the negotiations of the contracts. And then we had this new contract we just finished again and there was a cost of living adjustment again to all the coaches' fees. And we hadn't adjusted the athletic fee. And so, we felt it was time to keep pace with those natural cost adjustments. We heard from advisory committee members as well of, you know, let's keep pace with our costs and the fees. And so, we want to look at the, look at the athletic fee again.
Yeah, no, I understand when the issue of the athletic fee came up a couple of months ago, I think it was just a directive to John to, to take a look at increasing the athletic fee. And he came back with a proposal without really doing any research, benchmarking, discussion, consulting with the A.D. even. And, and I think there was some concern raised in the community about that approach. And I think it was the right decision to table it. I certainly agree that, you know, revisiting the athletic fee, you know, every so often makes sense. I just don't understand what the, the purpose of looking at. I, I don't think it's a productive use of the school committee's time as a policymaking board to be taking out administrative tasks in kind of information gathering with respect to a whole host of fees in the school community like this. I can see where the athletic fee information could be valuable and certainly Jim Quattramoni would be preparing that information in concert with Rick Swanson and John, probably in preparation for his program review this summer. And that's probably an appropriate time to deliver that information. But I'm not, I'm just not sure that it's an appropriate use of this body's time.
On the other fees, we, all of us, over time, have gotten many inquiries from parents about what are, why do I have to pay more or what, where's this coming from? And so, with those comments and in conjunction with comments we get from the advisory committee as well of what are the ways of supplementing the budget? We've talked before that we feel it's appropriate for us to really understand what's out there. And then if we are to implement fees, and we talked about this with the kindergarten tuition as well, of as we're going through that exercise of whether the town can pay for full-day kindergarten, what is our philosophy, what is the school committee's view of charging fees? And so, that's, that's where we are.
Yeah, I mean, I think the full-day kindergarten is kind of a separate issue than these things. And believe me, I, I agree with you, I'm a parent of four, I write a lot of checks. Okay, from the eight-dollar junior scholastic check in middle school to the athletic fees in the high school and the trips and everything else. You know, I think, Michelle, you and I talked briefly about the full-day kindergarten. I think you know the answer to how we find out whether the town wants to support full-day kindergarten in its budget or not. There's only one way to find that out and you know what that is. I won't say it out loud, but there's only one way to find that out. You know, I, I applaud you. I just, I'm not convinced that having school committee take time to delve into these fees, there could be a better approach to it. I think if you want to tackle the athletic fee first, I think maybe that's a good start. It's certainly better than what was attempted a couple of months ago without any backup or research or benchmarking. Because I think it's important to, specifically when you're approaching the athletic fee, to, to look at it two ways. The booster thing is, is a whole other issue that was discussed at some length on the school committee before you joined and there were differing opinions. And that's a culture, right, that has to be discussed and approached. And you have to figure out if that's the culture you want or not and how do you go about changing it if it's not? And so that's a, that's a challenge. It's a very positive thing in some ways and it's a very negative thing in other ways. You know, the other thing you have to look at, I think, you know, Carlos, you mentioned, looking at charging, you know, certain sports differently maybe and giving them more use or preferential treatment on, well, that's a difficult thing to do too. One sport over another sport, a female over a male. There are a whole host of issues that you have to look at there. So I don't know if this is the right body to be approaching those types of, of issues like that. I think if you just take the athletic fee and you take the two key issues or three key issues, you know, what are the costs? What does the fee cover? What does the kid get, what does the kid get out of it? And then also the fairness factor, right? So some would argue, and I think Dot has said this, that three and a quarter a year, which gets you one sport or three, could be a bargain for many because I think the majority play more than one sport, I think the numbers will, will show. But what about the kids who only play one sport? For them, it's not a bargain, so they're paying the same. So they would argue, wait a minute, why should I pay three and a quarter? Why, why shouldn't I just pay a per-sport fee and can't we find a way to allocate that? So maybe that's something that you can look at in your benchmarking. I think certainly before you propose a three-year increase of twenty-five dollars a year, you gotta look at what the other towns are doing, you gotta talk to your A.D., your new A.D. And you gotta do a lot of research and you gotta talk to parents.
And that's what we're gonna do.
I just, I just think the, the, the larger thing you're trying to tackle is a little too much right now. I think if you start with athletics and then start to move on from there.
Okay, that's what we agreed that we are gonna do, is we're starting with athletics, but we also have to deal with the rest of the high school to make sure we balance athletics and other programs in the high school that also charge fees because we've had discussions this year about what's fairness of those others as well. And so, yes.
And is the, is the ultimate goal to look at our fees and determine whether we're charging enough so that if we can find a way to collect more revenue to help our budget, is that the answer? Is that the, the goal?
The goal is to be fair and to keep pace. And we have heard the message from the advisory committee that we, our percentage increase needs to be managed better because it's unsustainable. And so, it's all on the table of where do we go? But it's also, we're also sensitive to if we haven't raised the athletic fee in five years, that you can't just have this huge increase right away because that's difficult for parents.
Sure.
So we don't have an ultimate goal right now. We're just gonna look at it and start talking it through and figuring out where to go with it. At least that's my.
Well, I think it's a little important to have a goal before you kind of embark on what could be kind of a policy initiative, right? Like what, what are you trying to accomplish by looking at these fees? Are you trying to say, well, gee, are we charging enough? Let's look at our benchmark towns, let's look at the fairness factor, right? Or is there a way to collect more fees because the people that are making recommendations to town meeting, some of whom have opinions, right, about unsustainability and other things, which maybe not everyone at town agrees with, you know, feel that we should find a way to, to raise fees and charge fees. And there were some on this committee a number of years ago who thought that we should be just raising fees every couple of years by a percentage just for cost of living, whether or not those costs went up or not. I mean, you mentioned in the contract negotiations, the coaching stipends. Now, maybe they went up this time, but they haven't always gone up every teacher contract.
Okay.
So I think that, no, I think it's important to, to just, let's, let's make clear that, yeah, maybe those were increases this time, but they haven't always increased in pace with other increases, so.
I, I think the goal is just to understand it. There's a lot of stuff we don't understand. So I would like to have some information in front of me so I can wrap my head around it and then decide what to do with it.
Because, well, I was thinking too, because I think what Liza originally had said too was that really to come up with what's the philosophy? Is collecting fees to offset the budget? Is it to make things equitable? So I think that's sort of, that was my take and I think that's what we were trying to come to a decision on. What is the philosophy behind collecting fees?
No, I think that makes perfect sense. I, I do think, and Dot would, would, would agree with this. I think that historically it's not been, fees have not been something that, you know, certain groups within the school committee have spent a lot of time on. For instance, policy, there was a point where policy didn't really have a whole lot to do and they were given some fees to look at. And now, for the last five or so years, it's kind of been in, in the policy role where it's not always been historically a policy.
Right.
But and that's.
Us do it.
Yeah. And that's part of the reason though, Ray, that I, that I support the idea of only doing the high school because we really, this all did stem out, like I said earlier, about the concept of whether we raise the athletic fees or not. So I don't really, if I'm talking about raising the athletic fees, and that's primarily what started this conversation, I don't need to know what the middle school or the elementary school kids are paying, but I would like to know what all the other fees are at the high school. So, you know, are people getting, is it all reasonable? Is it fair? Are the drama kids getting just as good a product and paying a lot less than the athletic fees? Maybe then I don't want to raise the athletic fees. That's why I feel like I need to know about the other fees, but only at the high school for the purpose of what I thought I was looking at the fees to discuss originally, which, like I said, started with the athletic fee conversation.
Yeah, no, I think that makes, that makes great sense and I applaud you for, for taking it on. It's gonna be a huge undertaking. I do think it's important to communicate, like this popped up on the agenda. I happen to look at the agenda because I do and, you know, there's eight people in the room and probably nobody watching on TV, maybe ten or so. But I think it's important when, these are, these are issues that I've heard from parents, hundreds. But I think it's important when, these are, these are issues that I've heard from parents, hundreds, hundreds of parents about over years.
Uh-huh.
And I think there are plenty of parents, for instance, when they heard a couple of months ago that there was talk about increasing the fee and there was no backup or research done, I heard from a lot of parents that, what are you talking about? Someone was texting me saying, do you want me to come to the meeting? There's concerns. I think you need to communicate when this is going to be the, on the agenda, when you're going to announce things like this, when you're going to...
Right, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
And this was on the agenda for the first time as an initial discussion. We're not announcing anything. This was an initial discussion that I had talked with Dot about before. We were bringing it back because we had talked about it, the budget, during budgets, we tabled it. This was the first time this was even, the concept was even addressed with the school committee because, and I put it on the agenda because I wanted to know what they wanted to do. So we don't have anything to announce to parents yet. When we have something to announce and we were, get input, we will communicate it better. But we don't even know what we're doing ourselves. So it's very difficult to then say to the parental community, come tell us what you want, when we don't even know what we want ourselves.
I know, but two months ago, there was almost going to be a vote taken, so that was a concern. So I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
And we tabled it because of that, so thank you for bringing that up.
No, just, I'm, I'm a constituent, so I'm here voicing my concerns to my elected officials.
Yes.
And I appreciate you taking that into consideration and moving forward accordingly.
Yes, that's what we're doing. Thank you.
I, I would just like to say that I, I feel that John has been chastised for not doing research. John wasn't asked to form a committee. John was asked to bring a fee recommendation back to the next meeting. And so I think properly we moved it on, so it could be decided in a different way. But, but John is not in any way at fault here.
Okay. So, so we'll communicate our next steps on that as we gather more information. Six point five, receive notification of some retirements. The school committee's information. Six point six, receive notification of some resignations. And six point seven is receive notification of some leaves of absences. Receive those. And then seven, any forty-hour issues? Okay. Subcommittee reports, project reports?
Community outreach is meeting Wednesday to discuss our survey with Stacker. So if we hope, if the building's open, we will be there at nine o'clock.
Salary negotiations, we're supposed to have a bargaining session tomorrow. It's not going to happen and we'll have to circle the wagons and come up with some new dates. Because we don't have any other dates on the books to finish up with the bus drivers, so.
And, and also salary negotiations is working out the search firm outreach as well. So when we set the next date, we will be able to give you a better update on that.
Come up with a format for searching, for searching for a search firm.
And policy?
We met last week, talked about, one of the things we talked about was the SBIRT, S-B-I-R-T, the opioid, you know, we have to institute a policy for that. And we're meeting again on March twenty-first.
And Special Ed has not met because we're working on budget. But Wednesday, I'll be going to the CPAC meeting and they've asked for a budget update. So I'll share with them where we are on these items. And then Special Ed's going to try and meet before the next school committee may need to approve minutes because it's been a while. And then if something else comes up, we'll schedule that accordingly. And...
John and I are going to the selectmen's meeting on Wednesday. They're going to be making a decision about using the Back River.
Oh, okay.
The rowing startup, so.
That was one thing that, just as an aside, that we had entered into that memorandum of understanding with the rowing association. And apparently they're going to launch the boats this spring. It looks like they're working towards launching them at the Back River because that was always one of the problems they had. Hingham Maritime doesn't put the docks in as early as rowing would like to start. And, and given what we've been having going on with storms, I can't even imagine what Hingham Maritime is going to be contending with. I hope they have docks that are intact to put in the water. But the rowing association had, had approached us, had approached me and asked if we needed to vote to approve them launching in the Back River. And I said, I thought that that was getting into a micro management. That would be like the swim team coming to us to ask to use a different pool or the ski team to use a different mountain or the hockey team to use a different rink. And I said that I thought that that was going beyond what... They've gotten John's permission to put, to store the boats there. They're working with the harbor master to get his permission. They've worked with the selectmen. They've got agreement with Back River, whoever manages, I believe, the state. So I told them it sounded like they had all the approvals they needed and they didn't need us to vote on whether they can launch at the Back River. But I did tell them that I would report the status of all that to everybody.
Now, Liz, I just want to report that, so Senator Sonia Diaz Chang had asked, asked school committees to reach out to the, you know, district senators and asked them to squat the appeal and to become a signature to her letter to the Ways and Means Committee. And, you know, I know Dr. Gal did that and I also sent him a letter asking him to take action, favor action on. And he did it and he responded, so I'm pleased to announce that. I'd advocate him for it.
That's great. Thank you for doing that. And just for long-range planning, for the net, the netting up in the high school looked really nice. I sent you guys some pictures and I didn't even really, couldn't really tell that it was there.
I couldn't see it in the picture you sent. It's very unapprusive.
Yeah, it's very subtle, so.
It always brightens the place up a little bit.
Yeah.
It's sort of weight.
Yeah. So, but I think when, when we pointed out at town meeting, people will notice it. But unless you were told that it was there, so that was a good thing.
And good timing too, all the storms.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I have a quick logistics question for Wednesday morning, our community outreach meeting. It starts at nine o'clock. If schools are delayed or...
What happens to our meeting?
Yes, do we, because I know it's posted, so if schools are delayed, are you, is your, are your offices open? Is town hall open? Do we know?
Tomorrow?
No, for the community outreach meeting, if there's a change with the opening of the school, does that change our meeting? I don't think so. Town hall's open Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
It's a hard name.
We will have another...
Okay, so as long as town hall's open, we will have a meeting then?
Conference meeting with the whole community represented, except whenever storms come, see what's done, what's plowed and what isn't plowed. And that's when we would know whether town hall would close.
Okay.
So that will be...
We have a meeting.
Three thirty or four on Tuesday, we'll have that meeting and then we'll know. One of the things that you might want to think of while we still have, no, we couldn't do it tomorrow, so forget that. It's going to be postponed tomorrow. I was going to say we could post another date because the problem is that you have to start over. You've got to reschedule a meeting. You can't just say, oh, it's tomorrow. You still have to give the forty-eight-hour notice with the agenda and so on, so, you know. What my thought was, well, maybe we tomorrow can post another date and save a day or so with that, but...
Hopefully everything will be cleaned and...
That's right, it will be...
We'll all be safe and have electricity.
That's right.
Yeah.
Ending on a positive note, I just want to say thanks to Dan, George, Donna and David for representing us very well before this advisory. Dan did an awesome, an awesome job, actually, I think, relating everything that we've been saying here for the several months. So especially with the social emotional issue, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will, and school is closed tomorrow. So I hope everyone is safe and sound and warm and has power all day long and that all of our DPW and our custodians and maintenance workers and Hingham Light does well and stays warm and doesn't work too hard. And on that note, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So I'm looking for a second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.